Sixteenth at 7:00 PM. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Yeah, just what I can't do.
Mr. Zimmerman, would you turn me down here? The only principal I know that brings a bank card. So I wanted to introduce you all to Mr. Christopher Zimmerman is the principal of Simron Middle School. And you know, Simron is a special place for all of us. My three kids went through there. Josh Rivera's two kids, Hod Hendricks' two kids, Cheryl Poe's grandkids went through there, Anne Barrington's too, John Dyak, I don't know how he's skating. And we make it, make it some hefty kids once or twice, I don't know, through there. Exactly, exactly. You're an active recruiter, yes. Chris, it's good to have you with us today. How long have you been the principal of Simron?
Eight years. I've been in the Parker community for four years. I started as a math teacher, but now I'm Legend.
Excellent. So you go back to the original group then?
I do, yeah.
Well, tonight, we just want to say congratulations to the 2022 Douglas County School District Administrator of the Year. First things to work, and what was in your announcement of your nomination was working intentionally, the team is built welcoming and inclusive culture was Zimmerman at the helm. Their work has integrated the school's mission and values with various initiatives, including sources of strength. It has created a place where students feel safe to learn and grow as individuals. And I know that you have a couple of Sam's kids that have gone through there in your tenure. And you know, I think it's important to note, because I think this is a little bit to your credit, that you had a student that went through Simron, who's now graduating from Legend, who got accepted into both the U.S. Naval Academy and the Air Force Academy, and she chose?
Air Force Academy.
Air Force Academy, all right. But we'll give you the credits for all that. We'll give you, they won't mind you. So this certificate of recognition is awarded to Christopher Zimmerman, 2022 DCSB Administrator of the Year, and signed by me on behalf of the whole town council. Congratulations, very well deserved. So we're going to get some pictures with the council to stand up here.
Congratulations, have a great summer.
Thank you.
You guys can give your back. You can go back, right?
Thank you.
You know, I can't imagine being an administrator in schools nowadays, let alone the past couple of years, which you've been through, Chris. So I'm glad you're coming back next year, and you know, Simron will continue to be the strongest school it is. So great. With that, we're going to continue on with our special presentation night and hear from the Parker Chamber of Commerce on their update. And I think Mr. Sullivan is going to have like 30 days, no, like 18 days left to the big event?
Till I drop dead of anxiety, yeah, that's about right. Hello, everyone. TJ Sullivan, President and CEO of the Parker Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, as always, for having me here to give you an update. Welcome to what we call in the Chamber Business Event Season, where we have a major event every two weeks until September, and where I will be nice and gray, I think, by the time we get to the holidays. So, but no, we had our golf tournament today, so we were, and I, it's the second time in my life I've ever stepped onto a golf course, because I'm not a golf guy. But we were down at Perdara, and what a beautiful course that is. And I got to tool around in a cart all day, which is really fun, and I really recommend it. I think I will start signing up for golf courses just so I can ride around in a cart, so. But we had a great time. We had 130 golfers and just a really great time. But let's get right to the big thing, Parker Days, June 10th through 12th, free admission downtown. We have exceeded our sponsorship goals. I think coming back after two years, well, you know, there was a little bit of concern, like, okay, are the sponsors going to come back? They have come back in a big way. Big sponsors Centura, Parker Adventist, Westera Credit Union, AAA Colorado. Pepsi has signed a 60-year deal with us to be the drink of Parker Days Festival. Allegro Music is sponsoring the community stage, so it's going to be happening in time. I hope everybody will come. The music lineup is awesome. Eighties Night on Saturday, I might have had a little influence on that. And then Country on Friday for people who like that. And then we're having the long run, the Eagles Tribute Bands for a little classic rock to take us out on Sunday night, so it's going to be great. We really emphasized fun, regional acts this year. We just wanted to have a lot of Colorado folks. We have a couple touring acts, but a lot of Colorado people. And my criteria was, I need to be able to dance to it and have fun, because we want people in Parker to have a really good time. So we've had wonderful collaboration with the DBA this year. The downtown merchants have been incredible. We've taken time to go to every single one of them and talk to them and make sure we hear their concerns, and we are including them in all our promotion and our maps and all that sort of thing. So the spirit of collaboration is strong this year. We're going to have a culinary, that's a hard word, culinary demonstration stage. So if you're not into the music on one end of the park or the other stuff, we have a big stage where people will be doing cooking demonstrations and things like that. So we really are trying to make sure there's something for everybody this year. A larger beer garden, which will make some people very happy. In past years, from what I understood, you would go and be around the stage and listen to music, and then if you wanted to go do something with your kids or walk around to the merchants, people were like, you know, pounding the beer type of thing. Well, now all of O'Brien Park is a beer garden, so a lot more room for people to enjoy the music and be with their families and that sort of thing. So I think that's going to be pretty popular. The carnival is, has expanded to include the RTD Lot and the Senior Center. Getting RTD to agree to that might be the greatest accomplishment in Chamber history, so I'm very excited about that. But that means that all the rides can be spread out, more room between rides. We have the whole thing fenced in. We have increased security, increased cameras, increased lighting, and we are, I'm very happy about that. Dedicated and secure bike parking, so if people are worried about parking, jump on the bike with the family, ride down here on one of the trails, and we will have secure bike parking for you. We have a little train that's going to be going up and down Main Street this year, carrying people from one end of the festival to the other. A silent disco, people putting on headphones and dancing around to three different channels, whatever they feel like listening to. A mechanical bull, axe throwing, a Colorado avalanche, portable ice rink, street performers, more than 200 marketplace vendors. I'm also, some of the little things that people might not even notice, we have about a dozen local nonprofits that are going to be helping us serve refreshments at the festival. And when I came in, I realized that some of them maybe wouldn't, they used to work for tips, right? And I was a little concerned that there might be some nonprofits that would work less desirable shifts, and so we're just paying them. We just set a rate, and we're paying all the nonprofits for their time to do that for us, and then they get an equal share of all the tips. So I think that's going to be really popular with the nonprofits, and it gives us a chance to spread some of the Parker Days love to people. More of a hometown feel, where the hours this year are Friday from 4:00 to 10:00, Saturday 10:00 to 10:00, and Sunday 10:00 to 8:00. Wristbands are on sale now, of course, at parkerdaysfestival.com. And I don't know if you know this, but we, before the festival opens, we have a special event where we invite citizens and children with special needs to come out on Friday, and we, they have the rides area just to themselves, and it's a real special little, not highly publicized thing we do. But I think it's a really wonderful program that we're going to continue this year. So Parker Days is back, come support it. I think you're going to like the changes, if you even notice them, but I think you'll like them, and hopefully everybody have a great time and good weather. Let's hope for that. Other things, May 5th, we had our second seminar in our Stronger Business Series, Seminar Series, about 30 folks learning how to be a better boss. Arapahoe Community College supports that, sponsors that for us, and that was a really good, a good business resilience type of activity we did. The first Wine Walk of Five is a week from this Friday on May 27th. We have 23 downtown merchants participating, and we're anticipating between 700 and 1,000 at every Wine Walk. So downtown's going to be hopping. On that first night, May 27th, you might notice a little activity going on over at the Pace Center, the Miss Colorado Pageant, oh, I said the P-word, I'm not supposed to say the P-word. Miss Colorado Scholarship Competition will be taking place at the Pace Center, and I was very excited that the Chamber was able to broker a deal to make Parker the permanent home of the Miss Colorado Competition. I just think it's going to bring a lot of excitement on Memorial Day weekends to the town. A lot of good families coming to the hotels and the businesses, the trophy shops, the hairstyling, God knows what, right? So we're hopefully going to bring some good economic development dollars with that. And I just want to tell you, this is kind of an inside thing, but the Chamber's booming, we're doing great. We've had 52 new members since January 1st. So things feel really good, and it's nice. And so, anyway, I'll take your questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hefta. Mr. Sullivan added one of my tasks off my list, so thank you TJ for doing that.
Again, TJ, and I'd like to also give a shout out to Jeff Sams as well in the audience. I had the opportunity to talk with you at one of the happy hours that we had planned, and your strategic thinking, your outside the box thinking, your operational changes are just fantastic.
Thank you.
And you're working so hard for the people of Parker, and it really, really shows, and it really, really pays off. And again, thank you so much for thinking of the children, especially the special needs children. I know my family will be there.
Great.
To enjoy those rides on Friday night. That is so kind of you to do that. And thank you for working so hard with the Downtown Business Association as well. It's truly appreciated, your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Barrington.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work. I'm really sad I'm going to miss Parker Days.
What? Does that mean we can rent your house? Because we need a little bit more space for some things.
I'll save you here. And Councilman Dyak.
Yeah, no, I think Parker is going to be great. You know, it'll be interesting to see after a two-year return. I always enjoy observing the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce and CEO, my apologies, gets more and more tense as the days progress. So keep on coming back, TJ. Looking forward to seeing that.
I've rented an Airbnb in Parker, so I will actually be a resident for those four days, so.
Councilman Hendricks.
Does a great job, TJ. The new members, 52 members, new, that are new, that's fantastic, and I hope you had a great golf outing today, and we're all looking forward to Parker Days. I'll be there. I'm excited for the future for your organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, I love your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And, you know, the changes that you're bringing forth, I think, are fantastic, not only for the Chamber but the town as a whole. But I've been asked a question I don't have the answer to.
Uh-oh.
Do you have musical groups coming? If so, who and when?
Do you mean like on the main stage, or do you mean like local groups?
Yes.
Yes, oh, yeah, we have full schedule, full schedule. It's available on parkerdaysfestival.com. The whole schedule of all of our acts are there. Everything from bluegrass, rock, to country, to, gosh, everything you can imagine. So a little R&B, so it's going to be, it's going to be really fun. So yes, the music is there. And then also on the community stage, we'll be having more local, you know, kids bands and things like that, like more of the Parker folks. I don't really even know the schedule for that, but it's everything from taekwondo demonstrations to, yeah, so.
Let the kids play.
Yes, absolutely. They have their own stage. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Rivero.
Thank you. Yeah, kudos, TJ. I mean, the growth is incredible. Obviously, Parker's doing well from the mayor's State of the Town address. It's doing really well. Truly appreciate what you've done with the Chamber, but I also want to give kudos to the board. I appreciate them hiring, hiring you and taking a good look at what we're doing and redirecting Parker Days back to Parker, I think, is, to say it nicely, to rein it in a little bit. It's been, it's been nice, and I look forward to, unfortunately, I won't see it personally, but I look forward to hearing about it and I look forward to the successes.
Thank you.
But, but well done, and I do, I will echo Councilman Hefta's, our get-together between the council and the Board of Directors was outstanding. I appreciate your air and appreciate getting to know, know you and some board members I didn't know. So well done.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Echoing everyone here on looking forward to Parker Days rearing back, and I think you're going to be surprised at the numbers that you're going to get. I think you might want to double your population numbers that, that time. I think everybody's ready for the rollback. But to TJ and to you and the board, to Jeff, thank you for your sponsorship of State of the Town. We appreciate it, and it was good to see you there. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your support of the Chamber.
All right. With that, we'll move on to, wow, the applause section this tonight, that's, I don't know, for you people making public comments, get ready, because the Sam's are out here. All right, public comments an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes at the beginning, and we'll pick it up at the end if needed. You must sign up ahead of time in order to make comment in the room. We also have available by email to the town clerk's office on the day of the meeting by 5:00, as well as via Zoom if you're watching and you can ask a question. But I do have two folks signed up in the room. Mr. Ramsey, if you want to come on down?
I want to speak on Auburn Hills only.
Say again?
I want to speak on Auburn Hills only, thank you.
Okay, you're going to speak on Auburn Hills. Okay, I'll remember that. And Mr. Cotton, if you're here, Mr. Cotton, if you'll come down and state your name and address for the record, and I'll give you your three minutes.
Good. Good evening, I'm George Cotton. I live at 2114 Forewood Side Lane, which is part of the Hidden River Community.
Great. Go ahead.
And I just wanted to bring attention to the council that the Hidden River 2 HOA has created a committee for keep an eye on undeveloped land that's adjacent to the community. In particular, the land that we're looking at is Long Tallman Gulch. We have a lot of respect for the open space along Tallman. It's a real unique corridor for wildlife and provides a lot of connectivity all the way from Sulphur Gulch up to Tallman Meadows Park. So I just wanted you all to be aware of our interest. We are looking for best use, not to impinge on any private development, but really to advocate for the continuity of the corridor and the, the great advantages it brings, both historically as well as the current wildlife in the corridor.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Cotton. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton.
And incidentally, I saw the white deer this weekend as I was walking through Rally Down, so that was an amazing thing. I haven't seen that in a while. So, Chris, do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to make public comment? All right. And I believe all the public comment we got in writing was in relation to an agenda item, which the council will take up later on this evening. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to comments, reports, and items from the mayor and council. I think I'll start to my left with Councilmember Dyak.
Thank you very much. On the 4th, we had a Douglas County Transportation Forum. I chair that on behalf of all the other municipalities within Douglas County. That's sort of an outcropping of the Denver Regional Council of Governments. This, at this time, we're talking about allocating roughly $40 million within the region. We went through what we call the First Call Recommendations. That's more of a regional project. And kudos to Lone Tree, they were awarded $4 million for their mobility hub project. We are talking at the very early stages of Call Two, which are sort of the local, or the local projects. Have not come to a consensus on that at this point in time. Later on that evening, we talked at a Dr. Cog Works session about housing and regional transportation planning. In addition to the Regional Transportation Plan 2050, the greenhouse gas update, that is regarding some potential emerging legislation which could potentially impact the ability for municipalities to construct roads. On the 5th, I attended with a few other council members and the mayor, a Trader Joe's preview tour, and I believe within the next 48 hours, I went there four additional times. So if anybody has a personal best, five or more, you got the record. Let's see, on the 12th, E470 Board Meeting. It was our first board meeting with new executive director Beau Memory. We approved some bridge and asphalt maintenance contracts. We also accepted the KPMG audit. There was a clean report, so that was good, good to hear. We also had a dashboard report for operations. They, they have infused metrics in their entire process, and the good news is they are, they are well exceeding their, their benchmarks. On the 13th, I, as the Chair of E470, along with Mayor Protem Bergen from the City of Aurora, she is the Vice Chair of E470. We hosted the IBTTA Board of Directors. It's the International Bridge Tunnel and Towing Association. We had two international members, one from Greece, one from Austria, so it was good to host them and talk, talk tolling. And today, I attended the IBTTA Conference on Road Usage Charging, otherwise known as RUC. So that is all, Mayor.
Busy couple of weeks. Councilmember Barrington.
Yeah, he was busier than me. I actually haven't had any board meetings since our last meeting, but I feel like I've been very busy with a daughter who went to Simron that has graduated from college now, so they were doing something right. Missed the Trader Joe's grand opening because a niece graduated also. I attended the State of the Town Breakfast that was put on by the Rotary, and it was, it was great. It was really well done. Thank you, Mayor. You did a great job, too. And I will be excited to attend the Parker Science Day coming up this weekend, I believe.
Sunday, I think.
This Sunday.
Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, I think the big event for, for most of us this week was the State of the Town. Again, as Anne said, put on by the Parker Rotary Club. The Parker Rotary Club did an outstanding job of putting this event on. We had a wonderful speaker, I think Ms. Silverstein, on economics, and of course, the mayor gave his report on the State of the Town, and we also honored some students from Legend High School. Was a very well-done event, and great to know that the State of the Town is very healthy. So outstanding job, Mayor Tobler. Thank you for that. And in addition, I also was busy talking to our residents and business owners this week in the course of my daily running around with my children. I was able to refer a businessman to Mr. John Fusa, the Planning Department, and I was also able to refer another resident to the Planning Department for some questions they had. And lastly, I had brought up some traffic concerns that I had talked to our residents about back in March, and very happy to learn that the traffic operations did a study on this matter, and will be installing some new signs near Salisbury Equestrian Park, and also more law enforcement in this area as well. I had a number of residents in my local neighborhood that wanted to address crossing the street by Salisbury Park, and there was also a number of other local traffic concerns throughout other communities in Parker that I had also listed in that request as well, and I believe there's, there's more law enforcement there as well. So I was very happy to learn about that today as well. Thank you very much.
Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As several noted, we've attended the State of the Town, State of a Town meeting, and it was a great time to see the pace room packed with various people. Also, attended Trader Joe's Grand Opening. I might become a groupie there now. Have been there four or five times. On a personal note, want to give a little shout out to Legend Lacrosse Varsity. They had their first winning season and their first playoff victory, and my son, our sons are on the team, so I just wanted to mention that. And then finally, I had a board meeting with Parker Senior Center. They have a lot of exciting things happening this summer. They're recovering from COVID, and as far as membership goes, they have 682 members, and they had a successful fundraiser, Shred-a-thon, and I was instructed to mention several events and fundraisers coming up this summer that we're all invited to, by the way. First and third Wednesdays of the month, they have a summer concert series from 7:00 to 8:00. Then there'll be a car show later on in June, Ice Cream Social, and Pancake Breakfast, which I'll bring up at the next update meeting for us. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Pogue.
Ah, thank you. By the way, you did a wonderful job at State of the Town.
Thank you.
I think, you know, a lot of good information shared, so thank you for that. Trader Joe's was such a delight. Man, you know, the artistic renditions they've got for History of Parker in their store, I was totally, you know, not expecting. I left there with a new craving, blueberry goat cheese. I love it. So with that, then, I did attend the beginning of the wildfire mitigation program that the Parker Police Department put on with a number of entities from around Douglas County, and I am really glad that Parker's taking a very serious look at this, because if you look at similarities between terrain, between the Mullen Fire and Parker, we got it. So I'm glad that they're doing that. I was involved with most of the Planning Commission interviews with Councilman Dyak here, or Rivera. I have to say, I am thoroughly impressed with the quality of the candidates that applied. I really am impressed with what I saw, you know, and we have a number of people for some of the, that were on the Planning Commission. They're going to be moving back. They want to go back to their seats, which gives continuity to this process. And some of the new appointees that'll be coming forward carry a lot of experience, which will benefit the town as a whole, so I'm really happy about that. And then I think that's all I had for this week.
Excellent. Councilman Rivero.
Thank you. Yes, I spent the 4th with Cheryl at the Planning Commission interviews. Again, echoed in what she says, incredible candidates. We found two really good ones, but we easily could have found five really, really good ones. Just a great night to learn more about Parker citizens. Before that, police officers squaring in, four or two new officers coming in to serve and protect our community. I'm always incredibly proud to be part of that. On the 6th, I was over at Trader Joe's for the grand opening. Really nice to see some commissioners there. I think George and Laura were there. Great group of citizens turned out. Pondo cheer team was there cheering everybody on, so it was, it was really, really good. And but with that, before I get to that, I got, again, second, Councilman Hendricks and the Legend Lacrosse Varsity team, well done, first, first win in playoffs. I had the honor of coaching some of those young men with Todd, and just really, really proud of them to see it. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to the game. And then after Trader Joe's, I raced over to Home Builders, and they had a symposium. I'm looking to pick the brains of some elected officials on what they could do better, frankly, and I always welcome that. I definitely look forward to developers and home builders. I, I definitely look forward to developers and, and home builders looking to know what, what it is they, they can do better and what it is the citizens are looking for and what their future neighbors are looking for. And then we had a bus tour of some of their latest pride and joy developments, if you will. Asked a lot of questions, why they did this, why they didn't do this. And I think we both learned from each other. So appreciate, appreciated being part of that. And then 12th, start of the day with the state of the town. Kudos to Jeff. Great event. Kudos to the Rotary. Way to partner with the town and, and to host a successful event. And then that evening, the wildfire summer, again with Cheryl. Incredible amount of information. Hopefully we'll do, do one again as, as the dry season, that we're already in it. But as it really kicks in, come late June, July, just a great partnership. I have to give kudos to Commander Coleman, sorry. I almost said Commander Andy. So anyway, Commander Coleman did an incredible job emceeing the whole thing, running the microphone around the room. One thing I learned, surprised I didn't know, but I learned that junipers, Spartan junipers, fire department calls those gas cans because they go like really quick. And if they're next to your house, it is not good. So those of you have Spartan junipers, think twice, especially if the wildfire season comes close. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Excellent. It has been a busy couple of weeks, no different for me. So on the fourth, Councilman Rivera and I attended the police officer squaring in. This was the 11th police officer squaring in in Parker since December of 2020. So great job, chief. Keep them coming. I know you've got another big group in the pipeline, so we'll, we'll be back there for that. Trader Joe's grand opening and the, the preview night was amazing. On the ninth, I attended the Boy Scout Troop 16 Court of Honor. Had a great chance to, to meet with them. You'll see them all out at Parker Days picking up trash. That's one of their bigger fundraisers and their community service events, but probably 50 young men advancing somewhere in the Boy Scout ranks. So it was a, a great time. I'm going to come back to the state of the town. On Friday, the 13th, I attended the Lutheran High School Portrait Contest where four poor children had to stare at me for four hours and do their best to capture me on a piece of paper. So it was an interesting event and I posted those on my four hours. Me sitting for four hours was great, but you know, them having to look at me. One student, you know, they were amazing artists, but one student in particular, his, his genre is cars. He's all about cars. So instead of drawing me, he drew my car. They stalked me in the parking lot, found out what kind of car I drove, and that was the portrait, was the, was the car. So very impressive young, young group of, of people. On Saturday, I had a chance to work at the diaper and formula drive with Rob and Judy Nelson up at Grace Baptist, probably handed out thousand, thousand plus cans of baby formula. And again, they weren't interested in could you afford it? It wasn't, it wasn't cost, it was need driven on whether you could find it. So kudos to Rob and Judy for, for their ministry there. And then that afternoon, I got to spend some quality time with Congressman Ken Buck as we walked through some neighborhoods, but also talking about all things Parker. And you know, Ken Buck never talks earmarks. He always is a, is a pretty straight shooter to the budget, but we, we tried to get some stuff in on Parker and so he's going to go back and take that. But I do want to mention the state of the town. And you know, this was the first time that the Rotary Club and the Town of Parker partnered for this event. And I just wanted to give kudos to Andy Anderson, our new communications manager, Beau Martinez and Cherry Sullivan for all the work that they did. We probably had 160 people out there. It was a great, great turnout. And you know, I had the easy job to speak about the Town of Parker, to walk through each of the departments that I admire and I'm so proud of and I respect. So it was a very easy speech to give. I'm surprised it only took, you know, it was a half an hour. I probably could have gone on for an hour, hour and a half. So thank you all to the department heads and to the staff for making that such a excellent event, but for making it so easy to talk about. And last but not least, the council is going to go through the consent agenda item here in just a moment, but I just want to announce that after they do that, this week will be Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st. So like I said, in the state of the town, if you walked here, if you drove here, if you rode a bike here, if you got stopped at a traffic light, if there was no snow on the ground, if there was no cracks in the sidewalks, that's thanks to our engineering and public work. So Tom Williams, to you and your team, thank you on behalf of the town. We appreciate everything you do. And with that, we will move into the consent items. Here, council, you have items A through I on consent. And if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, never mind. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve consent agenda items A through I, please.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Councilman Hendrick, sorry, Councilman Rivera, I don't know. Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hefta Rivera.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Diak.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And that passed a six to zero. Next up on our agenda are our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. One is on Auburn Hills Center MDP and the other is on a resolution regarding paid family medical leave insurance. So the way we do public hearings, and I know Julia, you're right there. The way we do public hearings is we first hear a presentation from the town. We give the council an opportunity to ask staff questions. Julie, I think you have an applicant with a presentation tonight.
No presentation, but available for questions.
Okay, does she want to make a statement at all or?
I think she's just going to be available for questions.
Okay, perfect. So then we'll have a chance to ask her questions. We'll go for a public comment. I'll then close the hearing. We'll come back to the council for deliberations on the, on the item and then we'll go for a final vote. So Julie, I will turn it over to you and.
Great. Good evening, council members. Mayor, thank you for having us here this evening. The applicant is requesting a minor development plat, which will subdivide the 5.053 acre property located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Jordan Road into five lots for future development. The site is located on the southwest corner of Main Street and Jordan Road. The subject area is bounded on the north by Main Street, to the east by Jordan Road, to the west by East Auburn Hills Drive, and to the south by Cedar Gulch Parkway. The area, including the cluster residential development to the immediate west, is designated neighborhood commercial. To the north of the project site and across Main Street is a single family residential The subject property was annexed into the town in June of 1987 with a planned development zoning. The zoning for the property, the Bradbury Ranch Third Amendment PD designates the property as neighborhood commercial. The proposed minor development plat application, known as Auburn Hills Center, is approximately 5.053 acres. The proposal consists of five commercial lots and internal private roadways and utilizes and utilities to serve each of the lots. Lot one is 1.29 acres. Lot two is .552 acres. Lot three is .6 acres. Lot four is 1.597 acres. Lot five is 1.01 acres in size. Access will be on the west side of the property on Auburn Hills Drive. A second access will be on the south side of the property with a full movement access. All future development will require a site plan approval. The project also proposes a vacation of a portion of the excess right of way along Jordan Road. I now like to turn the next slide over to Alex from Engineering to discuss the right of way vacation.
Thank you, Julia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. There we go. So as Julia mentioned, one of the things for your consideration tonight with this minor development plat is a proposed vacation of some excess right of way on Jordan Road. We've spoken with the council several times over the past year about this. This slide does highlight what we feel is excess right of way along the west side of Jordan Road. That's in place the way it is because as you can see, as, as Jordan Road goes to the south, it does cut to the west. So there was a change in the anticipated alignment of Jordan Road over the years, which resulted in us having about 40 feet of excess right of way on that side of the roadway. So Jordan Road through this area is what we would call a fully built arterial roadway. It has all the through lanes, all the turning lanes, all the auxiliary lanes that we think we need long-term for this roadway. The town did actually update our roadway system evaluation recently as well, which takes a long-term look at traffic projections and lane needs. That also did not see a need for additional lanes through Jordan Road. So with that as a backdrop, you know, we don't feel there's any, any need for future through lanes on Jordan Road in this area. So this is truly excess right of way. So with that, again, that being the case, the developer made a request if the town would consider selling the excess right of way to the developer so it could be incorporated into this project. The developer performed an appraisal that did evaluation of the property. The town had a third-party professional review this on our behalf and we negotiated a fair, what we think is a fair market price. And that number is $165,000. That number rolls in both the value of the vacated right of way as commercial development and also the enhanced value that the additional land brings to the overall project by having that additional space for development. So both of those categories are rolled into that one number as kind of the appraisal professionals directed us. The last thing, you know, I want to make sure I make this clear. We are going to retain all the right of way we think we need for any pedestrian and intersection improvements here. The developer will be constructing a widened sidewalk on Jordan Road per our current arterial standards. That will be within the, the right of way that we retain. As well as you can see at the Jordan and Main Street intersection, we did keep kind of a wedge there where the, where the right of way cuts diagonally. We do anticipate some minor improvements to the right turn lane at Jordan and Main Street to make that a little more navigable for trucks. So we made sure to keep the right of way that we thought we needed for, for future improvements.
Thank you. The applicant is providing a five-foot sidewalk around the perimeter of the site as well as along the internal access drive aisles. In addition, and consistent with the town's development design standards, the applicant is providing an eight-foot sidewalk, or tree lawn rather, along the public and private right of ways. The tree lawn meets the town's municipal code by providing one tree per 30 linear feet along Main Street and one tree per 40 linear feet along all other street frontages. All additional requirements, including building setbacks, architecture, landscaping and design will be reviewed as a part of a future site plan application. The applicant requires a subdivision improvement agreement to secure the public improvements associated with the proposed minor development plat. The SIA requirements include some of the following conditions. Prior to the record, recordation of the final plat, the developer is required to pay the town $87,500 for the design and construct of a traffic signal at the intersection of Jordan Road and Cedar Gulch Way. And as Alex previously mentioned, the developer is also required to pay $165,000 for the conveyance of the excess right of way along Jordan Road. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan and all plating requirements of the Bradbury Ranch Third Amendment Plan Development and Land Development Ordinance have been satisfied. The proposal provides adequate, excuse me, adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities and design considerations. And utilities providers have confirmed capacity and availability. And all referral agency comments have been addressed and the public notice requirements have been satisfied. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed MDP on April 28th, 2022 and voted unanimously to recommend that Town Council approve the application. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Auburn Hills Center filing number one, minor development plat. Ordinance number 1.558, vacating a portion of the right of way adjacent to Jordan Road between Main Street and East Auburn Hills and the subdivision improvement agreement. This concludes staff's report. The applicant's representative is here tonight to answer any questions.
Thanks, Julie. We're going to start with staff questions. And again, council, questions range from ordinance number 1.558 to the minor development plant as well as the subdivision agreement. So we're going to start to my left with Councilmember Barrington.
I can't really, I don't really have any questions. It looks, I'll save my comments for part two.
Okay. Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, could you talk a little bit about the higher density residential in this particular
It's neighborhood commercial, which allows for higher density residential. The community to the north was developed as a single family residential neighborhood. To the west, it was developed with townhomes. This lot would be purely for commercial development as currently proposed.
Serving those needs.
Serving the needs of those residents in the immediate vicinity.
Thank you.
Councilman Diak.
No questions for staff at this time.
Councilmember Pogue.
Yes, a couple of these lots, two and three are quite small. So what's the anticipated usage on these smaller lots? And also, how does that fit with the majority of other commercial lots we have in town size-wise?
We did require the applicant to submit a lot fit analysis to show that there would be suitable sized lots for future development. They were proposed theoretical future developments. We do have a current site plan application for a gas station, but they would likely be single, you know, five to 6,000, maybe 10,000 square foot commercial uses.
How do these comply, these sizes on these two comply with other areas in town with their site size?
They do, and we did require that they show building footprints. So showing that the lot, the lot fit analysis shows the building footprint of proposed developments ranging from most commercial, single tenant spaces can range from 2,500 square feet to 10,000 square feet. And they showed a range of those that were compliant with the Bradbury Ranch Plan Development zoning requirements as far as required setbacks. So as long as a building can fit on a lot and maintain those required setbacks, we allow for flexibility and square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Rivera.
No questions for staff.
Councilman Hendricks.
No questions.
Okay. And Julie, I know the applicant does not have a presentation or wish to make his comments, so we'll just go back to questions for the applicant.
Yes, they do not have a presentation, but they're available for questions. They are here.
Oh, sorry. Want to come down and we'll, we won't grill you on the spot, I promise. It'll just be easier for you to, to respond.
That's okay, in the hot seat.
It's okay. It's not that, it's not that hot.
Lukewarm.
Well, yeah, exactly. Councilmember Barrington, we'll start with you again on questions for the applicant, if any.
No questions, thank you though.
Great. Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, can you talk about the acreage on the neighborhood center?
Excuse me, before you answer that, can I, I don't think you entered your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. If you'll enter your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Corey Fraker and I'm going to go with 4201 East Yale Avenue.
Just talking about the acreage for the neighborhood center.
Could you expand on your question a little bit?
You have about 33% or eight acres on there. And how many businesses do you foresee on that acreage?
Currently, for our best guess, I think we anticipate trying to keep one tenant per lot. I think lots one and four are a little bit larger. So if a multi-tenant building fits and makes sense, we would look at utilizing that for that many tenants. So probably somewhere between five and seven at most, I would think.
Tenants.
Tenants, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Diak.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, what types of occupancies are you actually looking at at this point besides a gas station?
That's an excellent question. We have looked into, well, we've spoken with several different tenants. So far, we have not received as much interest as we would like, but right now we are looking at smaller footprint-sized coffee shops, medical office facilities. We've been in discussions with a couple daycares. And I think that's everything. I'm looking over just.
Couple smaller restaurants.
A couple smaller restaurants as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Rivera.
No questions.
All right, Councilman Hendricks.
No questions.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. See, it wasn't that bad.
No, it's not.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and go up and up for public comment at 7:46. Anyone from the public wishing to make public comment on the Auburn Hills Minor Development Plan, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Ramsey, are you coming forward on this one?
My name is Kenneth Ramsey. I live at 3862 Allen Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134.
Great, go ahead, sir.
And I've been in contact with Corey and my team has been working on her questions. It's hard to know what to say exactly because we don't know what's going to be there yet. But I will say, we appreciate your help and your cooperation with Saving Parker, Parker Wildlife Habitat, Saving Parker Wildlife, and especially Saving Parker's Keystone Species Prairie Dogs. All efforts to protect prairie dogs are welcome. While opinions vary, the facts about prairie dogs remain the same as a Keystone Species prairie dogs are the most important and most mistreated wildlife species in Colorado. Colorado and Parker are great places for wildlife and we want to keep it that way. In September 2020, money.com ranked Parker number two as the 2020 Best Places to Live in America list. Money described Parker as a gorgeous natural setting with breathtaking views and plenty of proximity to wildlife. Plenty of proximity to wildlife. At the webpage, www.parkercolorado.net, Living with Wildlife in Parker, Colorado, is the statement. Part of the reason so many people have flocked, flocked to Parker and Douglas County is because of the beautiful open spaces that we can view out our back door on a daily basis. With that beauty comes the original animal inhabitants of, of the plains of Colorado. With that beauty comes the original animal inhabitants of the plains of Colorado, including mountain lions, black bears, foxes, coyotes, birds of prey, rattlesnakes, bull snakes, skunks, raccoons, deer, rabbits, prairie dogs, and others. Living with these guys requires patience and planning. Everybody has to eat, so we must protect their food supply. Avoid poisons. Cover our flowers and plants with plastic or wire baskets. In April twenty twenty-two, the city of Fort Collins announced the six-point-seven-five-million-dollar purchase of six-hundred-and-seventy-five acres of land scheduled for home development. This land was added to their existing Bobcat Refuge Natural Area, and the three-thousand-two-hundred acres there will be protected by a permanent conservation easement. Laramore County is donating one million dollars for this purchase and will hold the conservation easement on all of Bobcat, Bobcat Ridge Natural Area in perpetuity. Parker can do better. Prairie dogs, prairie wildlife is still cherished by most Parker residents. The Parker Twenty Thirty-five Plan, Chapter Twelve, details protections for Parker Wildlife Habitat and for Parker Wildlife. Citizen surveys published in the Parker Talk of the Town paper verify that wildlife habitat and prairie wildlife are still high priorities in Parker. When will Parker put money to work fulfilling those aspirations and protecting Parker wildlife? Creating a Parker Prairie Dog Park will provide a reliable and safe source of food and shelter for Parker wildlife. Climate change, drought, fires, last hot, lost habitat, poisons, and species extinction are closing in on all kinds of birds, wildlife, and insects.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Appreciate it, as always. Anyone else from the public wishing to make a comment? Seeing none. Chris, do we have anybody online?
There's none.
There's not. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion at seven fifty PM, and we will bring it back to the council for further deliberation. I'm going to start to my right this time to choose it up, and Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I see here is a project to continue to create neighborhood centers. Neighborhood centers are beneficial to our community in the sense that we deal with traffic and traffic impasses largely because people are trying to get to places that aren't close to their homes. When we put things that people need closer to their homes, we lessen the impact on our overall system. And obviously, that's, that system is governed by the spine, which is Parker Road. And the more people have to cross over that spine and stop traffic going north-south, it creates a domino effect, if you will, on the rest of the lights that are timed off of Parker Road, or even smart-timed off of Parker Road now that we've done that. And when we give people what they need, whether it's coffee shops, daycares, nail salons, liquor stores, whatever it is they need in a daily trip, that helps our network system. And I truly, truly appreciate the idea of looking at small-market needs closer to homes. I think that's what this originally was planned for in nineteen eighty-seven, and I am, I am interested to see it come to fruition this many years later. With that, you know, what we look at and the criteria that we are, we are entertaining, first, consistent with the master plan, it does, it got by staff's radar, it got by staff's scrutiny, it got by the Planning Commission scrutiny, and they deemed it consistent with the master plan. My heavy look at, you know, consistency with the Land Development Ordinance, it does match that. It matches the plan development originally in eighteen eighty-seven, and it matches what we're, where we're at now. And I will say, I thank you very much for working with us to get that land back in your possession. I think it's going to benefit the, we're not using it, so it's definitely going to benefit the citizens that live in the area. Consistent with the zone district standards, absolutely. This matches, the neighborhood center was established back in nineteen eighty-seven, established for that neighborhood. That neighborhood was identified back then, and that neighborhood was identified back then to need those small-market uses that are close to their home on a daily, on a daily need. And then you, it was stated by staff that you have met the public notice requirements. And then lastly, and most importantly almost, is the subdivision improvement agreement and, and getting that light and a final partner, if you will, into that light and getting that, again, to help our citizens and, and future developers paying their way to, to, again, benefit our citizens, benefit traffic in the area. So with this, I'm in favor of this development.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah. You have a unique idea here. I don't see very many commercial properties that are subdivided to be sold to other, you know, entities rather than developing the whole thing. So what you're doing, at least in my mind, is you're creating an opportunity for a business owner to own the land and the building he's going to put up. So thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No comment.
Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Rivera picked up every single nook and cranny of evidence in his narrative. No, I mean, I concur. I think the staff findings, as indicated, have been met many years ago, four, five, six years ago. There was a thought to maybe rezone this to something different, much to Councilmembers Rivera's points. You know, we, we do need, we do need services close to developments, and as we continue to create developments, we need more and more of those that are closer so we can hopefully eliminate traffic issues, and it, and the planning is there. So supportive of this issue, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, I think, again, both council members, can I get their names now? Rivera and Dyak, you guys really hit on it, but I just wanted to make a comment since it's been about exactly a year since I've been on council now, and, you know, we get accused of a lot of things that, it's, it's interesting that, what, what happens behind the scenes is that most people don't take the time to learn how this process really works. And, you know, we've heard that we're not going to be satisfied until every square inch of vacant land has a building on it, and, which is just not true. But is, if, if it falls within the parameters of the master plan, the LDO, if it's got consistent zoning, if all of these are required, whether we really agree with it or not, we don't have, it's, this is something that we, we need to see move forward because we're here to, to look out, out for the best interests of everyone in town. So I, I think this is a great, unique idea, and I'm, I'm for it, but I just wanted to get that on record.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I, I completely appreciate Councilmember Barrington's remarks, because legally, when a private property owner meets the requirements as set forth by the town, we have to find a legal basis to disagree with that. Is that right, Ms. Hoffman?
That's correct. You need to base your decision on the criteria that you've established in the code.
That's right. So I appreciate Councilmember Barrington bringing that subject up. We will also want to serve residents in the town of Parker, and I appreciate Ms. Hoffman, our town attorney's, input on that, as we are guided by expert legal advice as we sit on Town Council, and we are in constant contact with Ms. Hoffman and Ms. Kivala on the nature of our duties. So we are advised very well by our town administrator, our town attorney, and our excellent directors and police chief. So in this particular case, this, this property was annexed into the town in nineteen eighty-seven, as, as Councilmember Rivera stated, and I think Councilmember Dyak also reiterated. This, this was annexed a long time ago, and so many of those property owners now are deciding to develop their property. And in this particular case, this truly, having this as a commercial planned development area for zoning truly serves the needs of the residents in this community. A lot of residents want restaurants right by where they live, and they want a nail salon that they can go to, or a place where they can get gas right around the corner. A lot of residents really appreciate that. So I just want to state that Councilmember Barrington brings up some excellent points. We don't always have the latitude to disagree with developments as they come into Parker. These are private property owners deciding to develop their property, and they must develop that property in accordance with the town's criteria, the, what we have on the books in the town. And we receive that expert legal advice from Ms. Hoffman if we can disagree on these matters or not. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council, we have three pieces of action on this public hearing to take care of. So I'll entertain a motion on Ordinance number one dot five five eight on second reading.
I move to approve Ordinance number one dot five five eight on second reading.
I'll second.
The motion is made by Councilmember Barrington, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks, Rivera, Pogue, Hendricks, Dyak, Barrington, Hefta, and that passes six to zero. Next up is the minor development plot.
I move to approve the Auburn Hills Center filing number one, Minor Development Plot, based upon staff findings.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivera, Pogue, Hendricks, Dyak, Barrington, Hefta, and that passes six to zero. And last up is the subdivision agreement for Auburn Hills.
I move to approve the Auburn Hills Center filing number one, Subdivision Improvement Agreement, based on staff findings.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivera, Pogue, Hendricks, Dyak, Barrington, Hefta, and that passes six to zero. Thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate it. All right. Next up on our agenda is Resolution number twenty-two dash zero-two-nine, a resolution to decline participation in the Paid Family Medical, Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. And I think for the first time, we have one of our new town attorneys, Kelsey Hall, presenting. So welcome.
Thank you so much for having me.
And council, you also have testimony from staff in writing at your, at your workstation that I'm sure you've already been reading. I will turn it over to you, Kelsey.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a note that those comments are available in the back of the room should any of the audience members like to take a look, and we will need to formally incorporate the written testimony into the record.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Amber, will you be joining, or are you just available for questions? Good stuff. All right, we'll wait for that to follow up.
Let me go back, Kelsey, real fast. We're going to open up this public hearing at eight o'clock. You don't have an applicant, so will, you can do your presentations. Council will ask questions, we'll open it up for public comment, and you can incorporate whatever statement you want about the written comment at that time as well. Then we'll close it, deliberate, and vote on it, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Back to you.
All right. Chris, would you pull up that PowerPoint when you've got a chance, please?
I'm trying to.
And if it's not working, I can get going, and we'll, we'll catch up when we need to. So thank you so much again for having me this evening, council members. I am here to speak with you about the Paid Family and Medical Leave Act, which was passed as Proposition One Eighteen in two thousand and twenty. This is a statewide program where employees would get up to twelve paid weeks of Paid Family and Medical Leave. The premiums would be up to point nine percent of their wages, and these costs would be split fifty-fifty between the employer and the employee. The max amount of payments that could be received would be about eleven hundred dollars a week. But there's a formula on the website, so it will depend on the employee. This leave can be used for a variety of things. It can be used for the birth or adoption of a new child, to care for a serious health condition for yourself or a member of your family, to make preparations for military deployment, and for safety needs associated with domestic violence, stalking, crimes of that nature. The town currently has the opportunity to either do nothing, which would accept coverage under this new program, which would begin in two thousand and twenty-four with premiums to begin in two thousand and twenty-three, or if it approves this resolution to decline coverage, then it would maintain the status quo, and for the next eight years, unless the council changes its mind, it would not accept coverage under this program. If the town were to accept coverage for its employees, the estimated fifty percent employer share of the premium for one year would be about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Employers are entitled to cover more of the employee's share of the premium, so the estimated cost of the town on an annual basis could be anywhere from about a hundred fifty thousand to about three hundred thousand dollars. But because the premiums are calculated at point nine percent of each employee's wages, that is a very difficult number to arrive at, and therefore should be taken with a grain of salt. The staff recommendation currently is to opt out of this program. That is because the town does currently offer several leave options already, such as Paid Sick Leave, Paid Vacation Leave, Short Term Disability, Long Term Disability, and Unpaid Federal Family Medical Leave Act Leave, which is up to eleven weeks. That does offer job protection. So we are in the process of potentially opting out of this piece of legislation. So far, we've taken the steps of notifying all of our employees of this hearing of what the coverage would be under the Family Act and what we currently offer. That went out on April twentieth, and as you saw, we had a few employees who did decide to give some public testimony, and we could potentially still have more tonight, who knows? I'm always in for more public comment. If you decide to decline participation, you will need to do so by voting on this resolution this evening. We will then provide notice of that vote to the Division of Family and Medical Leave sometime this fall. If you do decide to opt out, that does not preclude individual employees from still accepting coverage. Individuals may opt in. Under this scheme, what they would do is they would register with the Division of Family and Medical Leave as sole proprietors under the portal that will be open this fall. They will be responsible for reporting their wage data on, I think, an annual basis to the division, and they will be responsible for remitting their quarterly premiums, which will not exceed that fifty percent. They will not be responsible for that full one hundred percent of the premium. Let's see. The one catch is if either the employee opts in, or if you as a council decide to do nothing and opt into the program, you will be locked in for a minimum of three years. If you decline participation, you will have to vote on it again once every eight years. Therefore, that brings us to the end. You have two options here. If you approve the resolution, you will be declining participation in the family program and declining that coverage. That keeps a status quo. If you deny the resolution, you will therefore be accepting the coverage for employees, and you will be responsible for paying that fifty percent premium starting in two thousand and twenty-three. That's everything I have. Do you have any questions? I'm so sorry, the PowerPoint was not working.
Yep, thanks, Kelsey. That, that was great. So we'll go ahead and start to my left with Councilmember Hefta on this, and remembering that these are questions for staff, we'll save comments for the end.
Let's go over the, a little bit more information on the sole proprietor. So just for an example, someone needs to take leave for a difficult pregnancy. They can take, and if they bought into short-term disability, they can take their sick leave, they can apply for short-term disability through the private insurance carrier. And they could also have, assuming they could have bought into this program, so would they be paid as well through this potential program as well?
I believe so. I don't, under the act, I'm not sure if you would have to go sequentially. I believe you could do concurrently, but you could not exceed your total salary that you would normally get. As a reminder, short-term disability covers about sixty percent of your wages, whereas family will cap out at about eleven hundred dollars a week, though it will last for up to sixteen if you do have pregnancy complications.
So somebody that might be planning a number of pregnancies, or maybe has a number of medical issues to take care of, might consider going this sole proprietor route for some of their medical needs?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
So the, the town did send out a survey to its employees asking for, for their opinion, and if you said this, I'm sorry, how, how many responses did we get?
I believe we got six via the survey and two via email. So it was not a, a ton of responses, although there is an opportunity that people could still come for public testimony.
So of the people that responded, were they for this, or? So of the people that responded, were they for this, or?
Uh, overwhelmingly, it was in support of the resolution to opt out.
To opt out, meaning we would have to vote yes to say no?
Yes. Okay, that's, thank you. No problem.
Councilman Dyak?
So I, just more of a statement that you can say yes or no to is that if, if we stay in, we're requiring all employees to be part of this program. Whereas if we opt out, we are providing the employees the right to choose.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
Uh, no comment.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, just a quick one. For, let's say that we accept participation. What is the fee to the employee?
The fee to the employee will be 0.45% of their wages. So, simple math, because I'm an attorney, if your employee is making $100,000 a year, it would be $4,500 annually out of their paycheck.
I can see why they don't want to do this. Thank you.
Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. Would you consider all of the regulations and all the policy for this act complete yet?
No, there are still some draft regulations that are in the works. I believe there are two that they are still waiting to hold a public hearing on. I know one is private plans, and I forget, but maybe benefits is the second one. There's a, two rules that are up in the air currently.
Thank you.
Great, with that, we will open it up for public comment. Kelsey, is there any comment you want to make regarding the testimony?
Oh, yes. Kristen, do we need a formal vote to get it into the record, or do you just need to acknowledge?
No, if we can just acknowledge that we have received, that council has received the survey responses as well as the email responses, and we'll consider those as part of the public comment that's, that's being brought to you tonight for your consideration.
Yep, with that question, we'll, we'll sort it on that. We'll include that in.
Thank you.
Do you need that in the, Kristen, do you need that in the ultimate motion, or is it just?
No, we'll just note that for the, for the minutes. And Chris is nodding at me.
Before the meeting, and we've, we've all read through it, so.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Excellent, all right. So we're going to open it up for public comment at 8:10. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on this in the room? Seeing none? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so we're going to go and close that at 8:10. Counsel, we're going to come back in the same order for your final comments before we vote. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes. Just a general word on this. You know, as, as we go through life, we all have different medical needs based on who we are. I have seen this time and time again. I have seen young people die very young with serious medical compi- uh, complications. And then I have my in-laws who are, are living to a ripe old age in, in their 90s and have had so few medical complications. My mother-in-law throughout her lifetime, she's 92 years old, only, only started getting medical complications at 91. And so for me, when I evaluate this as a whole, I always take into consideration the comments, the six comments that we had. And the overwhelming majority on this spoke about freedom of choice of whether to participate in the program or not. The overwhelming majority didn't want to force all employees to participate in this program and have their paycheck subjected to additional taxes or fees that are coming out of their paycheck for every year. Because again, we all have different medical needs. And having a one-size-fits-all on this matter does not benefit the employees of the town of Parker. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I, I think you're right on there with the, the one-size-fits-all does not work for everyone who is an employee of the town. So even a lifeguard that's in high school would be forced to, to partake in this program. So I think that, but the, and the town can, can opt in, in any year, but they can only opt out every third year. That's what I saw somewhere. I don't know if that's true or not. But regardless, I don't want to force any, anyone that does not want to take part in this to have to, to pay for it.
Great, Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of staff's right to choice, so I will be voting yes to opt out.
Great, Councilman Hendricks?
I agree. I'm in favor of freedom of choice as well, and I will act accordingly.
Councilmember Pogue?
As am I.
And Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. Yeah, this was a, a really interesting decision. Again, you know, sitting up here, we have the opportunity to, to represent our citizens. And in this opportunity, we had to present, represent our citizens, but also our staff for this incredible organization. We had some incredible testimony, you know, going both ways. And I found interesting points on, on both sides. And the, the important was, I, I found one testimony in favor. And, you know, and stated it, it said, although individuals can still opt into the program. And I found that key, that even though the town as an organization can opt out, individuals can still opt in at no penalty to their fellow employer, employment, employees. And, and that really kind of weighed on me. And then, you know, as I looked at other things, you know, another, this is just another cost to labor that is already growing at an alarming rate. You know, with health insurance and, and other issues and the competitive market nowadays, labor is, is skyrocketing. To add this on top of that, it, it only will cost our taxpayers more to, to, to employ this incredible organization and then to grant the services that we, we demand as citizens. We do have existing benefits that are dependent on, or not dependent on family. And that's where I find, you know, the market economy as most important. Again, the, the comment that, that we received in favor, it talked about being, you know, marketable and, and being able to attract the right, you know, employees and young employees. And, and I thought those are all very good points. But I think that was touched on by my fellow councilmembers up here. Is that the role of the state to mandate such action? Is it the role of the state to tell us as a community that we have to do this? Because you have to be marketable. And I don't think it is. I really believe that if we're not being able to hire people, then we need to go out and look at what we're doing wrong and figure out individually as a community what we can do better to find those right kind of people. I don't believe that a one-size-fits-all, as was stated to my left earlier, is, is the right way to do this. But lastly, and most importantly, to the question I asked, you know, the rules have not been fully established. And I find it irresponsible to participate with tax dollars until we have our opportunity to fully, fully vet the rules in their entirety. I, I, we would never, you know, and we haven't, to be honest with you, even with the federal government entered into contractual agreements, unless we fully understood what all the rules were. And, and for the state to be still being crafting these, you know, if we decide in a year after they're crafted that, wait, actually, this is a really good idea, we can still opt in. But if we decide tonight that we want to opt in or not opt out, and the rules come back that we don't like them, we're stuck for three years. Our citizens are stuck for three years. Our employees are stuck for three years. So I will definitely be ruling a, to, ruling a yea to opt out of this program.
Counsel, with that, I will entertain a motion on resolution number 22-09.
Therefore, I move to approve resolution number 22-029 to decline participation in the Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, before we go to a vote?
I just want to remind counsel, because it's a little counterintuitive, that a yes vote opts you out of the program and declines participation. And a no vote would default us into participating in the program.
So with that, the motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. All right, moving on to our ordinances. First up is the Youth Commission presented by our town administrator, Michelle Kivala. This will have an ordinance and a resolution attached to it.
Mayor and council, as the mayor mentioned before you, is an ordinance and a resolution. I am very excited to be here in front of you tonight as the final step of creating Parker's first youth commission. And this is kind of right in my face. There we go. So the ordinance in front of you, which is for the second reading, actually creates the youth commission. The resolution is adopting the bylaws. And this is a discussion and a presentation that I discussed with you all in January at a study session in which I presented the draft bylaws. There hasn't been much change to those since that presentation and that discussion other than we did take out the section of the criteria requiring a certain GPA. So we did take that out after the discussion from you all. But kind of a little bit of background on this. This is something that we've discussed with council at a retreat and as I mentioned at the study session. And it would create a youth commission that would provide the opportunity for youth of Parker to get a greater knowledge and appreciation for our political system through active participation in their local government. It also enables them to learn how municipal government works and how municipal services are provided. It provides a means by which the town's youth can be heard and share their perspective on issues affecting the lives of young people in areas of social, educational, recreational, cultural, and public safety. It also assists the mayor, the town council, the town administrator, and department directors in policy and decision-making, problem-solving, and accomplishing community goals as related to youth. It also provides that leadership development experience that will enable young people to become productive citizens and leaders in our community. And so with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Great, I'm going to go ahead and start to my right. Councilman Hendricks, any questions on the ordinances or resolutions?
No questions.
Great, Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, just briefly. Who's going to be your oversight staff?
That is a good question, because that was on my list to talk about. And I realized after I opened it up for questions, and I thought, well, I'll just bring it up at the end. So I actually do have a team that I'm very excited about, and they're very excited to be working on this as well. So Bree Rock with the police department is going to be, it's a, it's a team effort, because I didn't want it housed in just one area. And I had very, I had a lot of enthusiastic members of our organization who want to be a part of it. And then Erin Kuhn in Parks and Recreation, and then Sherri Sullivan in my office will be the three leads working with the youth commission. And, and we've already been meeting on the next steps after tonight and divvying up those duties.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselman Rivero?
No questions.
Counselman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, so, so how many individuals do you project to be on this youth council?
So it's for nine and staggered terms of two years.
And then how many hours per month do you believe that your, your?
We're going to leave that to the youth commission members to really establish that once we get those members to determine, you know, what their hours will be and what activities and, and projects they've got going on. Because there's going to be some onboarding and training in the beginning. And then we've got some different, the teen has been talking about some of the different things that we'll let them take the lead on, such as a mission vision statement, a logo, some of the different policies and procedures, and then some of their goals and, and getting back to you all then on all of those.
And then are you reassigning duties from some current employees to this program? Or you're creating new position to administer this?
So Bree and Erin already work with a lot of the youth in their prospective departments. And then actually, there will be an email going out to you all in terms of some of the reorganization that's happening with the communications department. And so Sherri will be taking over a new position, a community relations liaison. And that is one of the duties that's allocated to that position.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so counsel, thank you, ma'am. Unless you have anything else in closing, all right?
No, I do not.
We're going to debate it then.
All right.
So we're going to stop back here. We'll go with Councilman Rivero first.
Excuse me, ma'am, you need to take public testimony on this item?
I was just thinking that in my head. I was skipping something, so. Sorry about that. Okay, we'll open it up for public testimony at 8:22. I'm so excited about the youth commission. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment? Seeing none? Anyone online? Okay, so after that short detour, we'll start with council comments and debate. Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. I'm ecstatic to, to see this come to fruition. We've, we've been after it a while. There was a lot of discussion on jurisdiction. Do they live in the town? Do they not live in the town? Should we represent all high schools? Can we represent all high schools? And, and the debate was ongoing. But I know we've been after this a while. And if Jackie corners me on this, I'm going to deny it. But they beat us. Lone Tree beat us to this, but it's okay.
Only because I used to work there.
That's, oh, good, good point. I never thought of that. Yep, there you go. But I know that we're going to do it bigger and better and, and, and be the stalwart. So again, well done by staff. Thank you so very much. Well done by legal to make all the hard questions work. And I'm ecstatic. I think, I think we were all ecstatic or in agreement, so thank you.
Great, Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I look forward to the opportunities for the youth of our community, but I don't have any other questions.
Councilman Hendricks?
Just great work by the staff. I'm glad the youth get a voice, so this is wonderful.
Counselman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
I'm excited about this. I think that so many of our youth and even adults in, in our community worry so much about, they, they don't really worry about local politics when that is what affects them directly. And so to teach, to teach them at an early age how, how important it really is to a community, I think it's great. So I'm excited about this.
Councilmember Hefta?
Because I would echo Councilmember Barrington's comments. For young people to have the opportunity to see local government in action at a young age encourages them to think about serving the government in the future in some capacity. And they also start understanding issues that will even prepare them for college. So having a youth commission really is going to help this community and help our youth. And I'm very excited about meeting them and seeing what they bring to council. Thank you.
Great. With that, and just to, as a point of personal preference, to our town administrator in your office, thank you so much for championing this and, and getting this off the ground. Our teens and our, our youth that get to serve on this commission are going to be lucky with the staff that were chosen. Such a high-energy group, such a, you know, such a dynamic group. So thank you for your thoughtfulness in putting that together as well. It's going to be a exceptional, exceptional group.
Thank you. I think we're all excited about it.
I think so. And I think you're going to have plenty of volunteers if you need us up here to, to attend.
Well, I was just thinking that. I've got, I'm going to need two to be on the interview committee, and it's going to be, I, I already know it's going to be everybody wanting.
I think we're drawing cards again this year for something else, so. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.560.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.560 on second reading.
I'll second that. I'll give it to Cheryl. Motion was made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. And next is a motion on resolution number 22-030 on the bylaws.
I move to approve resolution number 22-030.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. And we now have a youth commission. That's exciting. That's exciting. All right, ordinance number 1.559 on second reading. All right, ordinance number 1.559 on second reading. Now we get into Mr. Mustang's world, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Let's see if this one works. So before you tonight is a request from the property owner of Pine Bluffs filing number four, Lot 3, to vacate or release a slope easement on the property. This first slide shows you a vicinity map of the easement in the area we're discussing. Pine Bluffs filing number four is a commercial development at Pine Bluffs there at the northeast corner of Hess and Parker Road. Those buildings on the hard corner you see there are the ones that have, you know, Fuzzy's Taco Shop and Jersey Mike's right there, visible from the intersection. Lot 3 is the one immediately east of that one that shows the easement there. So it's the next one slated for a commercial development. It's basically the first one to the west side of that access, that private access that goes into the development from Hess Road. Slide, please. The slope easement on this property was acquired by the town back in 2004. It was part of a larger group of right-of-way easements the town acquired to build a huge Hess Road project. It's a project that took Hess Road from Parker Road all the way out to Canterbury Trail or Legend High School, essentially. The slope varies in size on this property. It's anywhere from 40 to 60 feet wide. Really, we obtained it to allow us to build a large, what we call a cut roadway slope on the property that allowed for the construction of Hess Road. And the next picture will show that. But essentially, the property is now slated for development. The approved site plan does not propose to disturb the roadway slope at all. They're basically putting a small retaining wall at the very top and going to build on the top of that slope. So they requested that we vacated just to remove the encumbrance from their property. And the next slide kind of shows you a street view of the slope we're discussing. This is looking back kind of northwesterly towards the Parker and Hess intersection. That building there is a Jersey Mike's building. So when I called it a cut slope, you know, what that means is the existing ground essentially was higher than where the road needed to be. So this slope was created by cutting away the existing ground. So really, the slope is more important for the development than it is for the road. You know, if anything happened to that slope, it wouldn't pose a stability risk to Hess Road really at all. So it's honestly more important for the property owner to maintain that now. So staff doesn't have any concerns vacating the easement at this point. So again, why is this before you? It's because our code does require an ordinance to be approved by town council to vacate any easement. So with that, staff does recommend approval of ordinance 1.559. The developer was not able to be here tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, we'll start to my left with questions on this. Councilman Diak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. So on this particular release of easement, I don't know what their intended use is or what will fit, but how close are they going to be coming to the roadway?
Not very close. So if you can, I don't know, if you can go back to that slide. They're basically going to build right up to the slope, essentially. So they're going to be, this will show it better, sorry. The last picture there. Yeah, they're essentially going to mirror what the lot to the west is. They're going to build at the top of the hill. So they're going to leave the whole slope in place and just really build on top of that kind of flat area outside of the slope. So their plans don't show any modification or recreating of that slope. They're going to leave it in place.
So what's behind that? Because that height and development will impede somebody's view. So what's back there?
So behind this one is the private access road. And then there's a large lot that Kaiser actually owns. It hasn't been developed yet. As you step up the hill, the Pine Bluffs homes, I think, are considerably higher than the commercial down here.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to block the view for those folks.
Right. This is pretty far away.
Development on the top of this slope easement.
Right. This is pretty far away from the homes up there. So I think they should have a few corridors over.
Okay.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. All of the public improvements in the area are complete, correct?
Correct.
This is not going to affect anything like that.
Nope, correct.
And they are not building anywhere in the slope easement. They're just asking to unencumber their property, correct?
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. Council, with that, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:30. Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment on this? Chris, do we have anybody online? Okay, we'll close that at 8:31. Bring it back to council in the same order for any comments. Councilman Diak?
No, I have no real comments on this other than I'm supportive of this issue.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yep, no comments, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No comment.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comment.
Councilmember Pogue?
I am concerned about the height of building on that slope and the impact that properties behind.
Councilman Rivera?
What's in front of us today is a slope easement and vacating the set easement and returning private property back to the private sector. So I'm in favor of getting the government out of where it doesn't need to be.
With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.559.
I move to approve ordinance dot one, dot one, 1.559 on second reading, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to one with Councilmember Pogue voting no. Next up on contracts over 500,000 is the O'Brien Park Playground Improvements. And this is the construction piece because our town was wise to buy the playground equipment long ago in advance of inflation, correct?
That's correct.
All right. That's my question before we start.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to ask for a proof of a contract with Richdale Construction for the construction of the new O'Brien Park Playground Improvements. I'm sure everybody's really familiar with that park. It's downtown. And the photo you have in front of you is the playground improvements area that we'll be working on if this contract moves forward. A little bit of background on the project. We did have two community workshops. We did get input from residents back in 2019. A theme was chosen of the Hillside Adventure Concept that was preferred by the community and includes universally accessible play equipment, climbing wall, musical instruments, additional shade structures, and increased picnic table seating. The universally accessible play equipment is one of our master plan goals that we've been striving for to include in all the playgrounds that are being either new or renovated. This project was put on hold in 2020 due to the COVID pandemic and then rebudgeted for 2022. And we're now moving forward with the project into the construction phase. We did put it out, we did have the construction drawings completed and we did the bidding. And as you mentioned, we pre-approved the play equipment on February 22 to purchase that and save some, about 5% on a recent increase on that equipment and also contractor markup. So that was a good move to do that in advance of the construction contract. So we put it out to bid. And right now, as I think everybody's aware, it's a very competitive bidding market. We're struggling to get contractors to bid on projects. And we did receive only one bid from Richdale Construction in the amount of $1,658,000. And that also included an ad alternate for that Hillside Play. That was the theme that the people in the initial two meetings had chosen. So we thought that would be a good idea to include that within the playground as part of the construction contract. Richdale has done work for the town in the past. I'm familiar with them from South Suburban projects that I worked with them on. They've been around since about 1995. They've always performed excellent work when I've worked with them. And they do have some projects that are recently completed for the City of Lakewood at Cottage Park, Foothills Park and Recreation Clement Park, Town of Erie at Sun and Erie Park. So they're all similar projects, playground construction, shelters and the like. We're also recommending a 10% construction contingency just because of any unforeseen conditions in the amount of $165,800. And then the construction schedule we're anticipating is we're looking at the award of contract hopefully here in May, tonight. And then the construction to start after Parker Days on June 14. And then hopefully it doesn't take until November, but with the way, there's some other items that need to be ordered and shipped. They may need the time to acquire those. So staff is recommending approval of the construction contract with Richdale Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,658,000 plus a 10% construction contingency. And that will be $165,800 for a total amount of $1,823,800. And we do have the funds available to cover the costs in the 2022 Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Fund. So if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
Great. Councilmember Hefta, I'll let you start off the questioning.
Fantastic job. I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Diak?
Yeah, Brett, I don't have an issue with the contractor. But with only one bid, how did, what steps did you take to kind of legitimize that that's a reasonable cost internally?
So we did contact the contractor to ask him if there was any potential, any cost savings or any reason why they thought maybe there wasn't any other bids. And actually, the contractor said that there's so much work out there now it's a competitive market. They did say there's some recent contract increases or construction cost increases on concrete and those kind of things. But they didn't have a good explanation of why they would have been the only bidder. I think it's competitive for the current market that we have right now. But we don't have a whole lot of data to go on as far as contracts that we've let recently, at least in the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Department.
I mean, just talking as professionals within your industry, you took a look at the price, previous contracts, and you seem to be agreeable.
Yeah, we feel like it was a decent bid in light of the increases in the concrete. That was kind of the major increase. There's about a 16% increase in concrete recently that we're seeing. So went from, you know, a few years ago, $6 a square foot for concrete to $11 a square foot for concrete. And in this case, there's not a lot of concrete on the job. So they charge more when there's less quantity. But we felt it was a reasonable price for that item. And that's usually one of your more expensive items on a shop.
Thanks.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Just for my information, how did you advertise your request for quote?
We do it on Rocky Mountain e-Purchasing. So it goes out to basically everybody in Colorado and then in the United States as well. So there's, it's online.
The state bid list, basically? Or larger than that?
It's larger than that. I think there's companies looking at it from, you know, all over the United States. We typically, I have never seen anybody bid from out of the country or anything like that. But, or even out of the state for that matter. But it is Rocky Mountain e-Purchasing. So it goes out to a wide variety of contractors, you know, hundreds of contractors.
Thank you.
Great. Councilman Rivera?
As we know, with the market ever-changing and we lock in this contract at 1.8 and change, that's it, correct? We'll get this done at that cost and no greater cost than that.